Commission meeting for May 16, 2017 will now come to order. We will begin by our invocation.
Let's pray. Oh Father God, as we come into the house tonight to conduct the business of the city, we ask your blessings upon all those present, for the commissioners to be able to hear and understand the issues, for the people bringing forth those issues, that we may clearly understand what the needs are. We give you thanks for our city, for our county, and our state, and for our country. We lift all of these things up in your most precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, commissioners. First item on our agenda is approval of our minutes from our last meeting. Do we have any corrections, any additions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address Section 6 and the staff update. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there was one other council action before our previous meeting that we did not get into the minutes. Heritage. And I believe, if I'm correct, the council overturned our action on heritage wine and spirits. But that did not get into this.
I don't know that she actually made it.
I don't know if I actually made an update at the meeting. We'll check on it.
Yes, because you brought to David Wright's removal of the item that's coming back before us for plan development tonight, so somebody from that side would have spoken to the council update. I mean, we wouldn't have put it in the minutes, correct?
We'll go back and review the record. I can't remember.
Anyway, we do not have on record that council action that affects this body. Okay? That's all, sir.
Okay. All right, so I think what we're talking about here is, is that commissioners are saying we need to make sure that our minutes reflect the action of the council when they did pass that. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Because they did. Okay. So with that addition.
I approve. Motion to approve.
It's been moved in second that we approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes stand approved. Next item is approval of the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are plats that meet the requirements of the City of Longview subdivision ordinance. These items will be approved with one vote unless any member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, any member of the public, or the applicant would like an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda for discussion. It appears we have three items on the consent agenda. What is your pleasure? It's been moved that we approve the consent agenda. That means nothing will be moved. And second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda stands approved. Now we'll move on to our regular agenda. The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the board. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The board also considers plats a procedure for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be, the public hearing will be open and testimony will be heard in the following order. Applicant, staff, the general public, those in support and in opposition to the requests. If you're part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than have each individual restate the same information. When addressing the board, please begin by stating your name and address. Try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed. No further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the board will vote on the request. Zoning request and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the City Council on June 8, 2017. First item, please, staff.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application PD-1704 filed by Yolanda Barron requesting to rezone approximately 6.80 acres of abstract 186 D Sanchez survey tract 22, section 5, from agriculture to plan development commercial located at 4805 Gilmer Road.
Okay, we're looking at item, application P-17-04, correct?
PD-17-04.
Mine are put in a little different order, so. Okay, I got it. All right. Is applicant present? If you'd like, please come forward and tell us about your application.
Yolanda Barron, 4805 Gilmer Road. Just having it rezoned to come into compliance.
Yes, and I can explain a little bit more in my staff report if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead with staff report.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone from agriculture to plan development commercial without a site plan approval. You previously saw this case about two zoning meetings ago. It was previously presented as Z-17-02, to rezone from ag, agricultural to heavy commercial. City Council requested that this case be presented as a plan development in order to restrict the uses allowed on this property. This plan development will allow for the existing property owner to utilize her property for mini warehouse and storage, and RV storage and rental. Uses that would not be allowed would include billiard parlor, pool hall, dance club or nightclub, sexually oriented businesses, and packaged stores. When the property owner decides to build a structure on the property, they will be required to come back to Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council for final site plan approval. As you can see here on the zoning map, approximately half the property is already zoned heavy commercial. Gilmer Road is a state highway, which is appropriate for this type of development, and staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. Staff recommends approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have questions for the applicant or for staff at this time? There being none, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We now open up the public hearing on application PD-17-04. Anyone present wishing to speak in support of this application, please come forward. Anyone present wishing to speak in opposition to this application, please come forward. There being none, the public hearing on application PD-17-04 is now closed. Are we ready for vote? It's been moved in second that we approve application PD-17-04. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Application PD-17-04 stands approved. Next.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application S-17-02 filed by Amy Calk requesting a specific use permit to allow for indoor amusement, an escape room in general retail zoning district for lot 3, block 1 of Park Place Edition located at 1905 West Loop 281, Suite 63.
Okay, is applicant present? If you will, please come, give us your name, address, and tell us about your project.
Hi, my name's Amy Calk, and the address and question is 1905 West Loop 281, Suite 63. And we would like to put in an escape room, which is an indoor amusement. It's a multiplayer live-action game similar to the board game Clue, where people will come in in groups of approximately eight, and they look for clues and open locks and have to come up with a solution to escape the room, although they're not physically locked in the room. It's just for entertainment.
Okay. All right. Any questions for the applicant?
Where is that location?
It's in the whole Big Lots shopping center, behind Taco Bell on the loop.
Can you advance to the actual shopping center and let her identify the suite that she's occupying? Which suite? The next, can you go to the next slide?
It's right beside the nail salon, to the right.
To the right of the nail salon.
Yes, ma'am.
And where is that from the college?
The college is just in the corner.
To the left.
Mm-hmm.
So that one's on the east side of that center.
Right, between a nail salon and a gym.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant at this time? There being none, we'll hear from staff. Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for indoor amusement in general retail zoning district. A specific use permit is required for indoor amusement within general retail to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Loop 281 is a principal arterial roadway, which is appropriate for this type of use. Staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Not at this time? Okay, we'll open up the public hearing on application S-17-02. Anyone present wishing to speak in support of this application, please come forward now. Anyone present wishing to speak in opposition, please come now. There being none, public hearing on that, this application is now closed. Is there questions? Are we ready for vote?
I would like to ask the hours of operation.
Will be open Friday evening from 7:00 to midnight, and Saturday from noon to midnight, and Sunday noon to 6:00.
And that's the rest of the time you will not be open? You'll be closed on the other days?
Right, unless, I mean, depending on the volume, if we see there's a need for more hours, we can extend that.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Do we have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve this application. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Application stands approved. Next one.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application PB-17-02 Chapel Edition filed by East Texas Homes Building and Properties LLC for a variance to subdivision ordinance section 92-102A to allow for a 55-foot lot width requirement instead of a 60-foot lot width requirement, as set forth in the zoning ordinance for approximately .379 acres of lots 8A and 9 New City Block 648, Longview Johnson Acreage, located west of Lilly Street on the north side of Chapel Street.
Okay, is applicant present? Please come, give us your name, address, and tell us about it.
I'm Joe Pinkston with East Texas Homes, 1331 Shiloh Road. And we just want a variance to split 110-foot wide lot into two 55-foot lots.
Okay. We'll hear from staff.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a variance to the subdivision ordinance. The applicant is proposing to plat this property into two residential lots. The property is zoned SF4, which requires a minimum lot width of 60 feet, minimum lot depth of 100, and a minimum lot size of 7,500. The applicant can meet the depth and lot size requirement, however, he cannot meet the minimum lot width requirements. The proposed lots would have a minimum lot width of 55 feet, however, they would have a lot depth of 150 and a minimum lot size of 8,250 square feet. There are several lots located through this neighborhood that do not meet the minimum lot width for SF4 that are adjacent to these lots. The applicant meets all other City of Longview requirements, and staff does recommend approval of this variance. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Commission, have any questions?
I have one, because, simply because I can't remember. What, would you identify an SF4 for me? An SF4?
An SF4 as far as the size? The lot size is 60 feet foot wide, 100 feet deep, that's, those are minimums, and then the lot size is 7,500 square feet.
So nothing, okay, I realize that's all here. There's nothing further that identifies an SF4?
There are different, now in SF4, there are setbacks, but they would remain the same. The setbacks for SF4 is 30 feet in the front, 10 foot in the rear, and 6 foot on the sides, and those all will remain the same, too.
Additional questions for staff or the applicant?
Mr. Pinkston? Would you state your relationship with Mary Lou Stuckey, please? You're the mother, you're the son-in-law to one of the patriarchs of our town?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there being no additional questions at this time? We'll open up public hearing on PB-17-02. Anyone present wishing to speak in support of this application, please come forward. Anyone present wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. There being none, the public hearing on PB-17-02 is now closed. Is there further discussion, or do we have a motion? It's been moved in second that we approve PB-17-02. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? PB-17-02 is approved. Next item.
The next item is, a public hearing will be held to consider M-17-01 to amend Article 17 and 22 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Longview to restrict the number of individuals who may occupy a one-family dwelling or a single dwelling unit, enact other requirements and definitions related to said restriction, and allow a two-year amortization period for existing uses that do not comply with said restriction or related requirements.
I assume this is coming from the staff?
Yes, this is.
Tell us about it.
And I'll go ahead and go into my, into the staff comments, and bear with me, they're lengthy, and so when I finish, I'll answer any questions. The Planning and Zoning Department has been tasked with clarifying the zoning ordinance for dwelling units and single housekeeping units. Staff along with several City Council members have received complaints regarding homes being leased out by the room that are located within single-family neighborhoods. Upon investigation, it was determined that the zoning ordinance lacked clarity and was inconsistent on this issue. Currently, the zoning ordinance defines a family as any number of individuals living together as a single housekeeping unit in which not more than four individuals are related by blood, marriage, or adoption. Also, it defines a one-family dwelling as a detached building having accommodations for and occupied by not more than one family, or by one family and not more than four borders and lodgers. Based on the current definition of family and one-family dwelling, the code would allow for up to eight unrelated people within a one-family dwelling. In order to clarify the code, we are suggesting amending the definitions, one-family dwelling, two-family dwelling, and dwelling unit. The current zoning ordinance defines one-family dwelling as a detached building having accommodations for and occupied by not more than one family, or by one family and not more than four borders and lodgers, and we're proposing to amend the definition to a detached building having accommodations for and occupied by not more than one family. As far as two-family dwelling, a detached building having separate accommodations for and occupied by not more than two families, or by two families and not more than four borders and lodgers. Staff is proposing to amend the definition to a detached building containing not more than two dwelling units sharing a common separation, having separate accommodations for, and occupied by not more than one family per dwelling unit. Currently, dwelling unit is defined as a building or portion of a building which is arranged, occupied, or intended to be occupied as living quarters and includes facilities for food preparation and sleeping. We are proposing to amend this definition to a building or portion of a building which is arranged, occupied, or intended to be occupied as living quarters and includes facilities for food preparation and sleeping for a family. To further clarify that a dwelling unit can only contain a family, which is defined as any number of individuals living together as a single housekeeping unit in which not more than four individuals are related by blood, marriage, or adoption, staff is proposing to create a definition for single housekeeping unit as well. This definition will be any household whose members are an interactive group of persons jointly occupying a dwelling unit, share a single lease agreement, including joint access to and use of all common areas, including living, kitchen, and eating areas within the dwelling unit, and sharing household activities and responsibilities such as meals, chores, expenses, and maintenance, and whose makeup is determined by the members of the unit rather than the landlord, property manager, or other third party. This does not include boarding or rooming house. Also, staff is proposing amendments to the zoning ordinance to add language to allow a two-year amortization period for non-conforming dwelling units. And these proposed changes will help better define that a single dwelling unit is intended for only one family within the code and allow staff to make clear determinations, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Other questions for staff? Okay. If there are no questions for staff at this time, then we will open up the public hearing on item number M-17-01. Anyone present wishing to speak in support? Please come forward.
My name's Robert Lamont. My address, 1604 North 10th Street. I'm not sure if I'm here to support this amendment or go against this amendment. I just wanted to speak to you about my observations on this subject. Up the street from me, there's a beautiful home that, well, and I've lived in this neighborhood most of my life, that they've taken and converted the home into essentially a triplex. Opened a door from one side or another. I've got three different people living there. They also put a, oh, a mailbox out front that had A, B, and C on the mailbox. I was dismayed just to see that something like this occurred in a single-family dwelling zone neighborhood. So I contacted the city last year about this. I'm very neighborly to everyone around me, and even to some of the folks that are living at this place, but I have some, several concerns on this topic. When I approached the city, I said, this is a single-family dwelling neighborhood. And they said, well, it really depends on how you define single-family dwelling. And I thought, my God, that seems to be self-evident, but I, off the top of my head, I said, well, I consider a single family as a group of people who are either related by marriage or by blood. And I know that isn't quite what's going on in this place, where we've got essentially a triplex going. And I, as I was listening to your proposed changes, it didn't quite address all the issues that you would deal with, with a, with something like this occurring in a neighborhood. So I'd like to add on to what you were saying. I think you should consider the number of vehicles that occupy those dwellings, because the street gets quite crowded with a number of folks just either living in this place, or there's clearly not enough room in the driveway for all the vehicles to go, so they park out front of the, of the house. Now, I'd address any number of other concerns, but I can't believe that we're talking about limiting the number of people in a dwelling, because, as I said, I grew up in this neighborhood. There were seven boys, one girl in my family, my mom and dad, and quite often I had cousins that came to live with us at my mother's home, which is right across the street from me. So as I'm watching my neighborhood change, and more of the houses are not owned, but they're rented, and how real estate has decided that maybe we can work against the city rules and let's, let's make this to where it's not quite airtight because of a definition. I think a single-family dwelling is, is almost an understood philosophy. We're all family. We're all part of Longview. And I don't want to be prejudicial with my terminology, but I'll tell you this, it almost seems like what we're looking for is almost something that I would expect from sanctuary city policy, that, that I understand the need for people to have a home, and to have a home in a nice neighborhood, and to, let's say, well, a right to, to live and freely roam the area. But in this case, what the city has already allowed is for homes to be divided up in areas they should not be divided up. And the definitions that we're talking about changing don't include everything, because there, there, there are exceptions to every rule in a family like mine. I'm not sure if my family actually even fell into that definition just by what I had heard today. But my concern is not so much the letter of the law, but the spirit of the law. Spirit of the law is that this is a single-family dwelling neighborhood, and they've turned it into multi-family dwellings, which create all sorts of problems. And I've been a little disappointed so far that action hasn't been taken. And quite frankly, I'm a bit conflicted, because, as I said, I, I almost feel sorry for one of the guys that I've met that already lives in this place. So I know there's a lot of feelings on this. I'm interested in hearing what opposition to this ordinance might be, but I'm not quite sure that I'm up here to fully support this with just what is, it may be a step, but I'm almost certain there are other steps that are going to need to be taken. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Staff, what, do you have some comments regarding this specific situation, since the gentleman said he did bring this to the city?
Yes, and this is one of the situations where they're taking a single-family home and making internal modifications. Now, when we start talking about a duplex or triplex, that's where you have one building, but it's internally separated to operate independently, and that's not what they've done. It's still one big open unit. And so, you know, the building code doesn't really limit the number of bedrooms, bathrooms, cooking facilities, you know? So you go into one of these, they may have multiple bedrooms, multiple living areas, but they're all interconnected, so it's not really a duplex or triplex under the city code. And so it gets more into how they're being operated, which is where we look to our definitions to tell us what's allowed. And so that's why we've tried to craft, you know, that, that language so that in a single-family neighborhood, it's only a single family living there, regardless of what the inside looks like. And previously, for whatever reason, the ordinance allowed, you know, a family plus four, and because a family was defined as any number of individuals related, or up to four unrelated, plus four unrelated, that essentially allowed for eight unrelated individuals, kind of a loophole, per se, so.
I would assume that what I'm hearing here is that, in a general sense, based on the description of the facility that he described, we're talking about a single-family house, basically?
Yes.
That's got two or three different. That's got two or three different entrances, but still a single-family house?
Yes.
And this definition basically addresses that?
Should. It's, it's not going to completely because we still allow for up to four unrelated individuals. And that's where you have situations where you've got, you know, a group of friends or whatever to allow for that roommate scenario. But where we've taken an extra step is to, to define that housekeeping unit. So, because that's generally where you have the impact, the negative impact, is not necessarily the number of people because, as he mentioned, we do have very large families. And so if you look at numbers to numbers, we're not trying to regulate the number per se. It's really how that operates, the housekeeping unit. And so by, by trying to define what a housekeeping unit is, that they function and live together and all those things that we outlined, that's just one more step to try to limit that, that negative impact that we're seeing.
Well, how, how do we, by code, define a boarding house?
A boarding house, by our code and by common definition, is, is where there's boarding and lodging offered for compensation, but it also may include other services like, more like what you'd see in a, you know, like a bed and breakfast, where the owners may live there as well and they rent out by the room, but that's more in line with what a, a boarding or rooming house. Now, what we're talking about is really more in line with what they call a group home. The common definition in the state of Texas for a group home is really defined as a home for protected class of citizens, so we don't use group home. But that's, but that's where, that's essentially what these are, are group homes, where they're just being rented out by the room for a number of different individuals that, that probably don't have any kind of relationship to each other, but they, they still may share common areas, but, and that's where the impact comes in.
Was that what you were describing, sir?
I believe so.
He needs to come up to the mic.
Yes, sir. He was mentioning a group home, which is almost kind of like a frat house, I would think. Is that correct?
Could be, yeah.
Okay. I just don't live by the university. I teach at the university, but I don't want a frat house on my block. It's not quite that bad yet, but it's, it is a serious problem and something that, whether you would restrict group homes or, it's almost like we're talking about rezoning the neighborhood. It's single-family dwelling, but these are the exceptions. And as I said, where the letter of the law is defeating the spirit of the law, there should be single families dwelling in these homes. And, you know, I can understand, I'm about to invite my nephew to come live with me for, you know, a month or two. I would understand anybody would have the right to do with their home what they wish, but these are homes that are not owned. That, well, they are owned, but they're being rented out. So I really think that part of the hitch of this is if you're going to be buying homes for renting, that there is a purpose for that rental. And as a single family, in a single-family zone, it should be a single family. The other exceptions, now, if this group of folks got together and bought that home, it would be a little different, I think. But, but in a case like this, like I said, it's, whatever dialogue you choose to use, it is a triplex in a, where there should only be a single-family home there.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure where we are with that. Staff, would you mind getting with him after the meeting?
Sure.
And let's look at this thing and make sure that it's conforming to our ordinances because if it's not, then we'll have a process to deal with that.
Would not the single lease agreement apply here?
Yeah, and, and this ordinance, you know, the, the one that he's talking about, there's, there's several others that have been identified through complaints over the last probably two years that we've kind of been working on this. And, and that's really what we're trying to address because, as he kind of mentioned there at the end, you know, if you had four people that were going in and maybe buying it and kind of working together, a true housekeeping unit, that is a little different. There's a whole different impact there. And that's really what this ordinance is trying to address, is saying, you know, if you're renting by the room where the people living there don't have any association and it's come and go, that's very different. But if you've got a group of four people that come and rent that house together and they share duties and they're roommates and they know each other and they have an associate, that's very different. That doesn't have the same impact.
But this does address.
And that's what this is, this is intending to address his concerns. One of the things that he brought up, parking, you know, we do have an ordinance that restricts overnight parking on the streets, and so that, that is an enforcement opportunity. Parking on the yard and parking on the grass is prohibited. So those are all clues to where, you know, these kind of nonconforming issues would occur. And with this ordinance, if it's adopted, then, then the ones like he's talking about that currently conform to our ordinance because of the, the potentially eight that are allowed, it would give them two years to become compliant per this, per this language.
Well, if you'd please get with him afterwards and look into that particular situation. We still have a public hearing open. Anyone else wishing to speak in support, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Mr. Shirley. I would like to support the proposed.
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry, Blessed Web, 1809 North Park Circle. I have the, one of the homes across the street from me. However, it has been subdivided into, the best that I can tell, possibly six apartments out of a four-bedroom home. I'd just like a clarification, if I could, because, just to understand fully, since there are kitchenettes that have been put into each of these rooms, will they be required to rectify that and put it back to the original intent of a bedroom? And then the front apartment where it has been divided off separate as well as the two back, will they be required also to put the footprint of the home back to the original intent?
The, the building code does not limit the number of bedrooms, cooking facilities, and so forth. So kitchenettes, we don't have a restriction on the number that they can have. We just require that they have to have at least one full kitchen. As far as the internal separation, if they have created demising walls internally that truly separate those?
Yes, sir.
That would be in violation because that's where it comes into creating a true duplex.
Yes, sir.
And so those will be things that we'll have to look at because some of that may not be legal currently. And so we're not saying that some of that will be able to stay for two years, but we'll have to investigate through our, our opportunities that we have.
Okay. And just to address, obviously, for fire code violations because people's lives could potentially be in jeopardy if someone were uncareful with a pot or, anyway. Well, I appreciate your work on this, and yes, I do approve of this amendment, the current definition that we are dealing with. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
What was your address, please?
1809 North Park Circle. That's in North Ridge Hills, off of the Loop.
North Park.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else present wishing to speak in support?
I don't think speaking in support, I was about to ask.
I, I will ask for opposition as soon as I give the supporters an opportunity to identify themselves. Okay. I don't see anyone else coming forward in support. Anyone wishing to come forward in opposition, please come forward now. State your name and address for us.
Lynette Jaggers. I live at 1402 Mary, 1404 and 1402 Mary Jane Drive. We have a house two doors down. As Mary Jane turns, there's a cul-de-sac, and then it becomes 1900. And 1901, I guess it was back, I don't know, month before Thanksgiving, it was sold and a lady came in and went in and closed in the formal living room, and it was already four bedrooms. And she closed in the formal living room and made another rental unit. So she has, well, that would be five, five different bedrooms, and she rents them out by the week. And then in the driveway, there would be, each night, there would be one vehicle truck with a trailer, two more vehicles, a motorcycle on the front porch, and then in the cul-de-sac, instead of parking alongside the curb, there was about four vehicles parked straight into the cul-de-sac. So when you came down the street, it was almost like there wasn't a cul-de-sac there. But anyway, she rents them out by the week, and not any of them were related. And, you know, there has been, a lot of people call in complaining to the police about the parking, and they have began issuing tickets to them if they're not parking, you know, alongside the curb. But they do park on the curb at night. And anyway, there has been a time or two that they've had to come call the police out because of, you know, something going on inside. I mean, this is, not any of these people are related, so they don't sign a lease, they rent by the month, and so it changes often. And, but it's just, you know, it's just not right. We, recently, somebody called about the parking. So she came and knocked on our door and threatened us and said, "I'm getting tired of y'all calling in the police." And I said, "Well, it wasn't us this time." However, we have talked to the zoning committee, and we've talked to the police about it. And she said, "Well, if y'all want to really see what kind of neighbors we can be, we'll start parking on the grass then." And anyway, I said, "Well, it sounds like you're threatening us," you know. And she said, "Well," she said, "I'm just trying to help people that can't live anywhere else." And anyway, she told us in that conversation, she has ninety rent houses and five boarding houses, whatever you'd call that, if groupy or what. But some of these people were, I mean, I'm sure they're all nice people, but they're, you know, when, one week, one weekend or one evening, there was, I don't know how many vehicles parked there. You know, when you've got five different rental units, unrelated, and they all start having friends over, you've got people lined up down the street. And then recently, two doors down from them, there was a graduation party. And so people were lined all up down the street for that on both sides. Well, then there was a ruckus, a lot of shouting and everything because somebody ended up parking in front of that house. So they came out and, you know, then there was a big shouting, you know, and made us go look out the window and thought, "What in the world's going on?" You know? But, you know, when you've got it, but what they were fussing about was, you know, we've been getting tickets for parking, and I, I don't know if some of them have moved out. There's not as many vehicles there now. But anyway, that lady, you know, came over and threatened and, you know, threatened us and said, "You better quit calling the police or we're going to start parking on the grass and we're going to start, start having front yard barbecues." And they do have a double gate they've got open, and they park one vehicle in the backyard. So it's just, it's just not fair. We have, we've had four houses in that subdivision right there on Mary Jane. Well, one was on Tryon Road, one. And it's always been family members and our family, you know, my mom and then our kids and then. But, you know, it's just not fair to somebody that has bought houses and improved them. And we've owned property there since 1990 and still have that house. And, you know, it's, it's just, you know, we've invested a lot in those properties because we've always bought them and gone in and remodeled them and landscaped the yard really nice and made a tremendous improvement to the neighborhood. And, you know, when somebody comes in like this and, you know, turns it into something else, well, it's just, you know, there should be an ordinance against it. You know, the very, very day that she first bought that, well, I went over to meet her and saw her out there and, you know, introduced myself, and she was just a nervous wreck, you know, talking to me. And, you know, I didn't find out until about a month later what was going on, why she was acting that way. And during the Thanksgiving holiday, they had a sewer problem. You know, there was so much extra usage of the sewer and all of, you know, kitchen facilities and everything. They started having sewer come up through the floor. And so they went through the whole holiday without any bathroom facilities, no water at all, you know. So anyway, they.
And they wanted to come use yours, right?
They did come next door. They came next door. There's a young couple living there, two eighteen-year-olds that live in one, one bedroom. And so the lady in between our house and theirs had become aggrained with them and let them come over there and use her washing machine and their shower for about two weeks. And then that, you know, whenever they'd call her about it, the owner, well, she'd say, "Don't call me one more time. You know, it's not going to get it repaired any faster," you know, so.
Ms. Jaggers, now, let me make sure I understand. This ordinance, that the amendment to this ordinance is supposed to help that situation by going in and putting stronger definitions on who can live?
Mm-hmm.
In a, quote-unquote?
Yeah.
Single-family structure?
Uh-huh.
So now, you, yeah, that's what I was going to say. It sounds like you're in support of this, not in opposition to it.
Oh, well, I, I got mixed up on what you were saying.
Okay, that's fine. For our record, I want to make sure that we have you on the right side.
Yeah, I just want, I want that not to be able to take place. A boarding house, you know, where the people right across, straight across from us, they're on the corner of Franklin, and their driveway comes off of Mary Jane. It's a Spanish family from California, and they have, they rent out rooms to people, but they live there. And everything, you know, there's never any problems, and they keep their place just manicured, and we've never, you know, had one complaint over them. First, we were sort of disappointed that, you know, that it was going that way, but, but I've always been friendly, and I don't speak English, but, but they're friendly.
Ms. Jaggers, if you, if you will forgive me, we, we must move on.
Okay, okay.
We will, we, we, we have heard, we hear you.
Okay. All right, I appreciate it.
And we will register you in, in support of this rather than opposition to it.
Okay.
Chief would like to ask you a question, please.
Ma'am, do you know who your police area representative is?
Um, I've got his name written down at Hummer right now. I can't think.
John Rawls, who lives on St. Street.
Okay. There, there is an officer that's assigned to each district in the city, and they deal with problems that you're talking about.
He has called me before.
Well.
I think, or somebody has.
He probably needs to come out and see the situation. And it sounds like there's a possibility of other ordinances that there may be some problems with, and that's what they do, is they handle. they do, is they handle those.
Yeah.
If you will call, Chief might wish him tomorrow morning.
Uh-huh.
And tell him that you came up here today and somebody in the commission recommended that you talk to the police area representative. I think maybe that can help you.
Uh-huh. Well, and also, we've spoken to the city councilwoman for area four, and she's, I don't see her here, but.
Well, a lot of things can get done by the.
Oh, that's.
And I believe about a week or so ago, when we first were notified of this one, we did, and the department officers went out there and have written tickets and are aware of it now.
Okay.
We're actively working.
That's, that's my main concern is that.
Well, I don't remember the police officer's name was, but he called me.
Well, he doesn't need to call you. He needs to go there.
He called me.
And you can get that done.
You know, he called me a few weeks after I first called them and said there had been, you know, a 911 call, somebody that had to be escorted out of the house.
There's a supervisor that's over the police area representatives and asked for him.
Uh-huh, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jaggers. Anyone else wishing to speak in either support or opposition, please come forward. Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Dean Revard. I live at 1406 Mary Jane. I live next door to Ms. Jagger. There, yeah, our concern, I mean, we rented the house there for several years before we bought, so I'm not trying to knock anybody out for renting, et cetera, et cetera. But as she mentioned, the house kitty-cornered us when they first moved. We had concerns, and they were renting things out, but they've kept the yard nice. They're friendly. They're great neighbors, and it's super. So we're not against that per se, but unsupervised, unkept up, cars parking parallel, you know, we've seen our property values decrease, and that's my biggest concern. As more and more of this has moved in, our property values decrease because of this rental situation. You know, I think one of the ladies that's doing this even commented that they, well, they wouldn't want to live in a neighborhood like that, but, you know, that's what they're doing, you know. So, so any rate, I just, I know you're busy. I don't want to take your time off, but I just want to lend my support to some changes being made because, again, they're parallel parking. It's not safe. There just doesn't seem to be any controls on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there be no one else to speak in support or opposition, public hearing on this item is now closed. Is there further discussion or is there a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
On the staff question.
Staff, go ahead.
When you, when you, your team worked through these, are we using a template? Are we using something that's strictly long views? Has it tried and proven anywhere else in Texas?
So what we did, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we've been kind of working on this for a couple of years. And, you know, when we first started, we kind of ran into a lot of roadblocks, you know, because our main focus was on the definition of family. And I think, as he mentioned earlier, you kind of, that's kind of an automatic. And that's where we ran into a lot of roadblocks. And so we started looking in other areas, and what we realized is we didn't have single housekeeping unit defined. And so that's where we started focusing on researching. A number of other cities are running into the same scenario. Most, a lot of college towns are dealing with it, with what they call stealth dorms, where people are going in and building five, six-bedroom houses and renting them out in this similar fashion. And so where the focus has been is trying to define housekeeping unit. And we did look at other communities. There's a lot of communities in Texas. We looked outside of Texas, and what we came up with was what we felt like, and our attorneys worked closely with us on this, on what we could define as really clamping down on what a housekeeping unit should be.
Secondary, where does enforcement fall?
That will fall on development services with our code compliance and planning departments working in tandem.
Great, okay. And the, as I read this, and I'm sure you can tell me this, I don't see anything in the proposed change that would prohibit what the new housing that's coming this way shortly called Generation X. And that is basically a, a house with an attached mother-in-law suite or a college dorm for children who came back after college, all within one unit, because they're still all related, correct?
Yeah. And now, if you have a structure that is attached like that, but doesn't share common access, you know, with an internal door or some, something similar to that, and has independent living facilities and kitchens, then that, that's where it gets a little tricky on our definitions. That would be more or less a duplex.
Well, the reason I ask, we need to look at Gen X, because otherwise, we're going to be dealing with this again within a year.
Sure.
Because a Gen X basically has a mother-in-law suite or a college kid. The kitchenette is really not existent, but it has a common door to the main house.
And as long as it's got a door into the main house and you don't have to go outside to come around, then it's all one main unit.
Okay.
And, and, you know, kitchenettes and things like that are fine, but what we don't allow is where you've got the, the demising wall with no internal connectivity and then a fully self, separate, self-contained dwelling unit that has full kitchen, full bathroom, that can be rented, et cetera, to outside the family.
Right. And you, you've already dealt with this one, just as consolation, because I work with the special needs groups, and I work with the unwed mothers groups in some of my travels. And because those are state-regulated, those group homes or whatever you call it would still be grandfathered by the state law because of fire protection and.
Yes, the, the state-regulated group homes, and five, 10 years ago, we would have called this a group home.
Yes, sir.
But state of Texas has defined a group home as a licensed facility for a protected class of citizens. And so those are exempt from any zoning rules limiting the number of unrelated persons. Now, they, they aren't exempt from fire code, so the fire code says if you have more than five or six, don't quote me on that, then you have to rent. So they are required to meet all those codes and have all the safety things, but they are exempt from the, the number of unrelated persons.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure those are two areas. You know, and I think, commissioners, in looking at this, I think the obvious thing that we see here is owner-occupied, non-owner-occupied, because we've heard several people comment that the owners are occupying the houses and written, and, but if the owner's absentee across town, across the street, or across the country, then, you know.
Potentially, but I think it's beyond that, because it, because, like they said, there's, there's not a problem with rental units, and that's not what we're trying to regulate. It's how they're rented that causes the problem when you start renting by the room.
By the week.
By the week, by the month, and you don't have a cohesive unit living there sharing those duties. Then you have four or five people there, you multiply the traffic. You know, if you've got a group of, you know, three or four guys that are, that are roommates, they generally have the same friends. They generally share duties. Much different impact than five or six that have no relationship. And so that's what, and that was one of the areas, because we started looking at, okay, do we change the number of unrelated people? Well, you don't want to have unintended consequences, because you, you don't necessarily, we're not trying to get rid of those situations where you've got, say, four college kids living together that share those duties and things. So we had to be very careful about that.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Shirley. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Are you ready for questions? All those on paper, side?
Aye.
Opposed? There being none, item M-17-01 is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, staff update.
The S U P that went to city council for the drive-through window was approved by city council.
Okay. All right. Do we have an additional citizen comment at this time? Any commissioner comment at this time?
Congratulations, yourself.
I graduated Aggie daughter. What are you going to do with all that extra money you got now?
With that, this meeting of the Planted Zoning Commission is now adjourned.